Meeting will come to order. We have two additions to the agenda. One involving a capital request for mowers for one of the golf courses. The other concerning a septic system using some of our common property to make this right for the homeowners. I have David Welchel's proxy on stipulated. Tia, Mike, and Mary are attending via Zoom. At this time, the first order of business is open forum. We had no one sign up to speak. So we'll move on to the board management response to open forum questions from last time. Tom?
Just do any question that came up.
Okay. There's no response to last time either because we respond during the regular meeting. We have a proposal concerning a new trailhead on Chelsea close to Tudor.
It's actually close to Arthur. I apologize.
Close to which one?
It's Chelsea and Arthur.
Arthur, yes, okay. Yeah, Tudor's someplace else. Okay.
Do my foot jump in?
Go right ahead.
With the creation of Little Sugar Trail System, we're finding that there's certain areas that we need to add additional trailheads so we can accommodate the needs of the people that want to use the trail. And one of the areas that we've been able to locate a potential new trailhead would be at approximately Arthur and Chelsea. It would be a little bit to the west of Arthur. There's a nice open area in that section. On page five of the board packet, you can see the proposed location. It has good, this location has good sightlines for the drivers if they're coming upon it. We just feel that it would be a good location for a trailhead and alleviate some of the demand. So we're proposing that on the 20th, the board consider this. It would require an agreement that would be made between the POA and the Trailblazers to construct it. There is, we, this will not increase any of our expenses. They're going to install the trailhead at their expense. This trailhead would, would fall under the $35,000 per year allocation that is for the Little Sugar. So it would have to fall under that budget. So there would be no increase in costs associated with this. We would also include in the, in the agreement, if there was any somewhat similar to what we did with the Metfield Connector, if there was any significant damage caused by maybe a downed tree or something to that nature, that, that would be covered, not covered by the POA. Any questions?
Tom, I have one question. The current trailheads, have they been inspected and approved by ACC?
Doug, maybe you can answer that question?
I don't believe so. I don't believe that the ACC was involved in reviewing those, no.
Why not? I'm just curious.
Not sure that there is a need for the ACC to approve any of the, any of the trailheads.
Isn't, isn't the ACC the architectural control committee? There's certainly any architect here involved in putting down the gravel.
Yeah, the, the ACC is typically concerned with permitting, you know, and issues surrounding homes, colors of home, paint and roofs and driveways, those types of things. I can reach out to them and ask them if, if they have a concern, but.
Don't, let me jump in.
Sure.
In the agreement that the POA has with, between, in that case, it's between the city and, and it's between the POA, the city, and Trailblazers, it stipulates in there that they're required to get all necessary permitting, correct?
Yes.
Good. The reason why I ask, because it's been pointed out to me by several different members, and they appear to be members in good standing, but I don't know for sure, that the surfaces of the various parking lots are different. And a homeowner has to meet a specific type of gravel, okay, to be driven on, parked on, so on. And if they're to meet all of the same regulations as a, an individual property owner, then why shouldn't ACC have some control in there? I'm just trying to find answers to answer the members.
We'll look into it. I'll contact the Trailblazers and ask that question. But as I said, it's, it's their requirement to follow all standards, whether it's federal, state, local, standards, permits, so forth. So, but I'll ask the question.
Okay. I mean, it's, it's a city project apparently, but it's on POA property. So we're the property owners. So we are the ones that are held liable for what happens. It just seems to me as though that if an individual has to meet certain requirements, that the POA as an association should meet the same requirements.
Jerry, have, have the members who contacted you about this, have they reached out to the ACC to see what they have to say about it?
I have not asked that question at this point, no.
I would, I mean, since as a POA, we have, we have no control over the ACC. I thought perhaps maybe they should just go directly to the ACC and they could get their answers quicker.
I personally don't prefer to push off problems to someone else if we can answer them ourselves.
That being said, we still don't control the ACC.
I agree with that. I understand that.
We'll, I'll do some research and I will get back to the board.
I, I don't have a question, but is this our discussion period over this?
If you have something to say, yes.
I, I do. I am still opposed to us licensing any additional POA land. I believe that we should be retaining this. I'm not opposed to us putting a trailhead in, but I think we need to look towards the future. As Tom has mentioned, we have a lot of great volunteers working to keep the trails maintained. But what's going to happen in the future if they get tired of doing maintenance work? And we end up having to do, we end up having to pay people to do all the maintenance work. We're going to need a form of revenue. And like I had mentioned, I've talked to two attorneys. Now, these are people that litigate insurance claims. But a public parking lot is something that we can ensure. And you can put a disclaimer on a parking ticket. And I know the argument was made, we can't enforce this. However, we were told that if people are parking illegally at Tanyard Creek, we can call the city and they can issue a ticket. Why couldn't we do the same thing here with a parking ticket? And as I mentioned, members can buy an annual parking pass, the same as we can buy a sticker for our kayak. Again, additional revenue for the POA. Members should pay to use the amenities. I know we can't pay to make them, you know, to allow them to use the trails. That's a totally separate thing. But I think the POA needs to be retaining this land. That's my opinion.
For a piece of clarification regarding the calling the city regarding Tanyard Creek, that would be if they, they parked illegally on the road, on the public road. They wouldn't be able, this city would not be able to ticket someone if they parked improperly in the parking lot at Tanyard Creek. But if they were on the road, that's within their jurisdiction and they can ticket them.
Okay. So we'd need to have a park rangers to be meter maids?
We, we don't have ticketing or fining authority. It's in the declaration. It specifically says we can't do that. It would be wonderful if we could. If we could, if someone is acting inappropriately on the lake and speeding or conducting themselves in a hazardous manner, it would be great if we could pull them over and the, and the rangers, the lakes and parks rangers could ticket them. We do not have that authority.
So it'd be the same as, as at a boat ramp. The only thing the lake rangers can do is ask them to leave.
That is correct.
Yeah. But if even half the people paid for parking, it's still, again, a revenue source for the POA.
That would be a decision of the, of the board.
I think it would be more likely if we would get members who want to volunteer to donate to the trails rather than form policy and have employees mandated to work areas of, are you getting your ticket, your sticker or not? When we have no, members are going to know, the public's going to know, we have no way to enforce it. So why would you do it? I think it'd be easier to form, like Mike had mentioned before, a donation area and ask for help to keep up the trails. Because if not, no one's going to do it if you don't have to.
I think, Tia, you're right on that. I think if we charge people for that property or whatnot, we would have to be responsible for building and putting the whole structure together. If somebody comes in and pays for it all and yet we're going to charge people to park there, they might not even build it in the first place.
Possibly. Possibly. But I will say we can enforce if someone doesn't have a sticker on their kayak.
We don't fine them, we ask them to leave.
We do fine them if they ever try to sticker their boat.
If they did.
It's a 10% increase, yeah.
That's a late penalty.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the budget.
You need a motion on that.
When it comes to this Chelsea trailhead, Doug, it's a great point where these licensing agreements are normally 25 years in length. Is there anything that we should be thinking ahead about with lowering that year, the 25-year limit? Because we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what we could possibly want to do with that area 10 years from now.
Yeah, we can, we can change the term. You know, that would be a negotiable point, yeah.
In the licensing agreement though, is there any provision stating that within the, the licensing period, that Trailblazers would be responsible for re, refurbishing the area? Because 25 years, that gravel's going to be gone. You know, it.
Really good point.
There might be a benefit to having it 25 years if Trailblazers are going to come back on a regular basis during that period and refurbish the area.
It, it may make sense to match the term of the agreement for Little Sugar that is already in place so that they would sunset at the same time.
Is there a way to put a clause that said, because this is Chelsea room, this is very public access area, it's a great location, and I do want the trailhead there right now, but I want to be careful in the future. What if we need another fire station and the city needs it? You know, if we does this licensing agreement, have a way that we could just say in the future, if absolutely we didn't improve it and we need that land back, we're, I mean, we're not getting any, just like, I know that, but. Anything like that possible?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
I oversee Trailblazers being a various actor that would want to come back and cause a headache or pinch point on, on Sunday and become rundown or refurbished. I, I just don't see that being a scenario. So I guess we can go through these hypotheticals if you feel like it's a value add. But I personally don't think that that's a scenario that's going to happen.
I, I'm confused. In these licensing agreements, does it state that they're going to maintain them? The Northwest Trailblazers?
No, it, it doesn't. It's, it's a construction license and then an operation license.
Right. So we're responsible for the maintenance anyway, us and the city.
Yeah. Other than like the Metfield Connector where there was an agreement that there wouldn't be any additional maintenance costs for three years. And I think that's the understanding that, that this would have that same provision, that there would be no maintenance cost for the POA, you know, for that initial three-year terms. But then after that, it would fall under the regular maintenance costs that we've committed to.
Okay. Moving on to the budget timeline. As you can see, capital budget.
Hey, David, before we move on to the budget timeline, Doug, are you going to look at adding anything to that licensing agreement? In terms of, you know, return to the, like Kita said, returning the use of it to the POA if certain things occur? Or redoing the surface if the surface becomes an issue?
What do we have for the other, right now? The other trailheads? Is there any kind of language like that?
No. It's, 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 like I just mentioned, it's a, it's a license agreement for construction. And then once that terminates, it, it turns over to an operating license. You know, this, this agreement, I can look at putting some of that in there. It's just going to be different from, from the other ones.
I don't, I don't have an issue if it's different from the other one. I mean, we, we learn as we go along.
Yeah, I can draft some language and present it to the board to, to see if, if everyone's on, in agreement with that. I mean, the board has to vote on the agreement at some point anyway. So I'll put a draft together and circulate that, that agreement for the board's review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Can we get a motion right now for that creation of the agreement?
No.
Okay. Now we're going to move on to the budget calendar, budget timeline. The, as you can see, there is a timeline. I don't know that there's a lot of potential discussion about this. This is just the way it works. Only have to complete one budget this year. That should be easier. Lot of unknowns, though. Any comments or discussion about the budget timeline? Okay. Next item, there will be a first reading of a change to Article Three, the bylaws. There is a suggested motion so that we don't say it incorrectly. Any discussion on this one?
I need to express my objection to the three-year period. It appears as somewhat capricious, arbitrary. And I think really it would more depend upon what the reason was why a director was removed from the board. It may be something that was taken care of and done with, and maybe even promises made that won't occur again. But should that then restrict that person from running for the board? Just kind of throw it out. It just, it bothers me to put a three-year period on there when something that could be much more detrimental, whatever the action was that was removing the person, the three years is not enough. And that's why I feel that just putting that three-year prohibition in there is, is not a good move.
Well, Jerry, I, I will comment about that. It says removed for cause. And removal from the board is the most extreme. It's the, the most punitive action that we can take as a board to remove. There are a lot of other actions that can be undertaken if there are, you know, problems. There's a lot of other things that we can do up to. So my feeling is that if it was egregious enough to cause removal, we go ahead and stick with the three years because apparently it was, it was a very serious offense. And to say, you know, depends what it is, we're not allowed to say because it was an executive session. So we're bound by confidentiality. So in this case, we don't really get to explain ourselves to anybody. And there are other actions up to and including removal. So, you know, I would, I would stick, you know, if you do something that's serious, there are consequences to the actions.
And the three years wasn't drawn out of habit, Jerry. The, the three years is assuming that in three years, there will be a new board. If, if someone could run again in a year after they were removed for cause, they're going to be serving with the same people who voted to remove them from the board in the first place, which is kind of awkward. Plus, the person who's been removed from the board, if they were to run again in a year, has information that is confidential, that we really can't enforce confidentiality after somebody leaves the board, then they could use that confidential information in a campaign, running again to get back on the board.
I mean, I agree. I mean, this is, this is a Steve scenario. Clearly, we're talking about his.
Mike, Mike, Mike. No names, please.
No, no last names mentioned. And.
No names.
And I think that we've got a three-year penalty. Jerry, would you feel better if it was two? It can't be just one year. It, it has to be something to all these points that are going to be presented now for the third time. Maybe the fourth time after the exact same points. So, you know, if, if three years is the sticking thing, then maybe we should say two. But it, it has to be one, one year for all the logical points that have been presented diligently now at, at least three times.
Well, I'm not going to discuss it any further on this, but under your reasoning, the reasoning that's been given, three years is very arbitrary. It should be forever then.
Yeah.
I don't agree with two or even one. If they're going to be removed for the same reasonings, then they should be prohibited from running for the board at any time.
I, I'd like to know, have we ever had anyone who was removed run again and actually get elected? I know we've had some removed who have run again, but have we ever had one get elected again? I mean, I think the thing we have to remember is that this is a property owners' association and it is the members who are to decide who is on the board for the most part. I understand we have exceptions with vacancies and whatnot. for the most part. I understand we have exceptions with vacancies and whatnot. And so, if someone has been removed, what are their chances even of getting reelected? And furthermore, if their crime has risen to the level of being so serious that it's almost criminal, and we have not turned it over to the law, we've decided to settle it ourselves, you can easily write in the settlement that the person cannot run again. So, I'm against the three-year term also because David ran again, and he was elected, so now he's on the board for six years. So, there's not necessarily a new board in three years.
But it would be predominantly new. So, Sandy, are you saying you endorse the forever? They can't run ever again?
If we're saying that someone removed from the board has done something so egregious, then I'd be more in favor of forever as opposed to three years. But I think it should be taken on an individual basis. I think that, again, like I said, if a director does something that is so serious that it should, could possibly be turned over to the law, then I think that case, that person, should not be able to run at all. If it's something where somebody is difficult to work with, and the existing members are not comfortable with the person going back on the board, then I think it's the members who should decide whether the person is reelected or not, not the board members. So, I don't think that should be in there at all. I mean, I agree that if somebody committed a felony, or somebody is a sex offender, I'm kinda surprised we didn't do that in the past, you know, to prevent criminals from being on the board, but I don't think that we should put anything in there in regard to a board member that's been removed.
So, I know I've stated things in the past that was understandably in support of this, even though in my part, I'm not in support of any limit. The three years just doesn't sit right with me because, and it's why I've lurked against it in rules and regs, is because I just don't think we should be speaking for the members. I know it could be an awkward situation. I know it could be hard for us if something egregious does happen, but we have to let the members dictate that. Do they want that person to have it? I know it could be bad. And here, I wanna play out a conspiracy theory that sounds ridiculous, but as work directors, it's something we ought to consider. If we have a three-year limit, how quickly could this entire board flip? If a higher power, someone with the money and time and effort to put in, gets board members removed, and they can't run again for three years. In three years, you could have a whole flock of the board all in support of one certain thing, and that's scary. I don't want to put into policy something that would allow a whole board to change. It sounds great, but when you really play it out, it's possible if we put a three-year limit. For that, it's the only reason I'm gonna give it.
But two, we were elected to speak for the members. You just said, "We don't wanna speak for the members." That's why we were elected.
That's correct. After we get elected, we speak for the members, but we don't need to be speaking for them when it comes to an election. If that isn't gonna make sense to you.
You
I don't see this as speaking for them when it comes to an election. We're speaking for them regarding an issue that was brought before the board.
What I think about it is the reason, the cause, the reason the person was removed is not known and cannot be known by the members. So, they have no way of knowing whether this person should be voted back on or not.
I agree.
They do disclose what policy was the reason for the dismissal. So, in some sense, they do know why the individual was removed.
Yeah. The policies are not quite that explicit for examples, and you know, most recently, we have had a lot of questions, "Why, why, why, why?" And we're not allowed to elaborate. And in the case of an election, in the case of an election, we would not be able to elaborate the reasoning behind the board's decision. So, maybe we should consider forever. I think that's a little extreme, myself.
Or maybe we send the policy back to rules and regs, and we give some examples. As long as Doug thinks that we can give examples and not be restricted just to those issues.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug. I think that in our conversation, we had a forever ban would be very challenging to convince a judge, if it ever got to that point, that that was justified, where three years would be a reasonable you could reasonably defend that point of view.
It would be really tough to defend a forever ban, and I would hate to get into the situation where we're having to, you know, name every single thing, you know, and what the potential punishment would be for that. I think the board is, you know, that first sentence is pretty easily defendable, convicted felons and registered sex offenders. That's why that's in there. And we considered other possibilities when we drafted it, but those were the the two categories that were most easily defendable, in my opinion. So, a two- or a three-year ban, I think for the reasons that you've all mentioned here, are are defendable. You know, the reasons that you've outlined being the basis for that decision.
I think it's possible, you know, for a person to change in time, to learn. A three-year ban should get a person's attention, and if you don't change, you probably end up with the same result again. But in three years' time, people can change a lot, so I'm comfortable with the three-year, and any more discussion?
I suggest a compromise and change it to one.
I know. I don't see how we can flip-flop that happily, Tia. You can't go from forever to one to three. I think you can go back to rules and regs if we need to. I do agree, David, people could have a change of heart, be a lot better of a person, or learn from mistakes. One of the bigger things is civic service like this is a rarity. Volunteerism at a level like this, and the amount of hours that you have to spend is not an easy task to ask of anyone. And so, anybody that could step up to the plate and deliver, you know, this amount of hours and this amount of scrutiny should be lauded regardless. What I've seen so far, I've heard is there's a lot of people running up their personal desires and endeavors against things, and bringing a lot of vitriol and hate towards the conversation instead of civic service and volunteerism. And so, when we look at these type of bans, we look at these type of reasonings, these are the scenarios at which we're playing out. You know, does it make sense for our particular one that has brought this to the attention right now to make a sweeping change over our rules? Perhaps. Is it a Band-Aid to say a few years to see if it's just better? In general, does another board in a few years decide to expunge our three-year thing? Probably. But we have to learn some lessons from this type of repetitive behavior out of membership and the POA. So, we're both gonna be facing a fine, if you will, of years because of the way we've let things disintegrate to where these type of actions are now the norm. That's that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. That being said, I think we will move on. Next item that will be considered a week from today. The second reading of Policies 1.03 and 1.07. Changes were made. It was voted in the affirmative at the last meeting in July. We will vote for a second reading on those items next Thursday. Any further discussion at this time on those two?
Yeah, let me jump in real quick. On this one, so for, I'm specifically talking about Policy 1.03. You'll see that 1.03 is listed twice here. So, what would happen would be is that the board would vote, the second vote, to confirm the changes to Policy 1.03. And then, they would take up a new first vote, which would be primarily to remove the word "guidelines," and also the now removed community involvement committee reference. But by doing it in this manner, we didn't have to send the other changes back to a first reading. This allows the second reading to be completed on 1.03 and 1.07, and then the additional changes made in that specific order.
I have to disagree with that kind of a process with it. It's possible, like what happened with one other one. We got through a first reading, but we got missed on the second reading. So, we approved 103 as it currently is written, with the guidelines still in there. And then, immediately following that, go to another first reading of removing that word "guideline" and the community involvement. Let's do it all at once. Get the whole thing done with first reading, because you're gonna go through a first reading anyway, hopefully. Rather than just leaving it and not adding, removing the guidelines and the other changes. So, that'd be my suggestion, is that we forget about the second reading of it. We go to a first reading with the changes added to it. I also have a little bit of a question about the recording of minutes, or recording of meetings, excuse me. It really seems to me as though the statement, the way it's written in there, it doesn't point to any person. It says "association." Most of the other policies, we point it to a particular department, person, COO, board chair, the board, those kinds of things. This just says "association." And if you interpret that correctly, that could mean anyone within the association could give written permission. So, I don't think that's what we want. And the last comment on it is that it appears to me as though this is simply a retaliation against one person. Because, as far as I know, there's only been one person that has done the recording. And has that recording really hurt anything, other than it's made a few people angry? Just throw that out.
It has hurt. Those videos have hurt. They are detrimental. They're slanderous. They do hurt a person who is just trying to volunteer and help our community, and the people there in the workforce that are still having these things put out there. It does hurt, and it is detrimental.
Again, Jerry, I would say actions have consequences.
Go ahead. I'm trying to hear you.
I said, "Again, actions have consequences."
I have no problem with doing it the way it's been suggested today on the on the minute, or the agenda.
I actually do agree, Jerry, that you're pointing out the word "association." That's spot on. We missed that. We have talked about that.
Is that correct? Is association? It's in the definitions.
Yeah, I mean, you it's a good point. I would say that, you know, and other uses of the word "association," that the board acts on behalf of the association. You act on behalf of the association as the president to sign contracts, so you know, the board and you have the authority to bind the association. I don't think any random person out there has that authority legally. It would just be the board and you.
So, the way it's, so, the way it's currently written with the use of the word "association," you feel is acceptable?
It is acceptable the way it's written.
I just always try to avoid any confrontations if we can possibly do it, and if we can make something clear in writing, then we're better off, rather than leaving it open to somebody's interpretation down the line.
Okay.
Mind if I jump in?
Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, okay. So, on the next ones, and you'll see that there's quite a number of changes at the request of Dirk or Hoover. We went through almost two dozen policies. And remove the word, use of the word "guidelines," because guidelines is not a very clear or specific
Tom, are we gonna talk about 107, or come back to it?
Whatever you feel is best.
Okay, sure.
Anybody else have any more comment on 107?
Hearing none, I'll start out with it then, because I do have some on 107. The heading on the policy is "board meetings." Okay, then, as you go work through it, you talk somewhat about all board meetings and all committee meetings, but yet, some of it is pointed directly to the regular board session. So, I would like to see it where it is clarified a little bit better, even in the heading. Is this policy covering the regular board session? Or does it cover all meetings? It just doesn't seem right the way it's listed currently. And then, if you move down to V1, does this prohibit a member that, for whatever reason, did not sign up that he cannot speak? The way it kinda is open to interpretation a little bit, but it pretty much says that, hey, if you don't sign up, you can't speak. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's what we want to say.
You don't think members need to identify themselves?
Say, do they have to identify themselves?
Well, sign up.
Well, yeah, but I can identify myself at the microphone.
Yes, and you and I are both aware that listening to things on the microphone is sometimes a little hard to understand. sometimes a little hard to understand. If the members will sign up, put their name down, then we know who they are.
Okay.
You and I both have problems understanding names, particularly amplified speech. Many times I do not get the name of the person when they come up to the microphone. I have to check later to find out what their name is, if I actually heard it correctly. So I think by just asking people to sign up is just a, it's a courtesy thing.
I don't have a problem with asking them to sign up, not at all. My whole point out of it is that, okay, these three sign up, I don't, but they make some statements and so on during their time period that directly affect me, and I want to talk. Okay, am I prohibited from saying anything based on this, the way it's written? Or am I allowed to come up, find the piece of paper, sign my name on it, and then go ahead and speak?
Can I take that one, David? Because we discussed it in rules and regs.
Sure.
Jerry, you had sent me an email asking us if you think I responded to you, and we discussed it in rules and regs, that that is not prohibiting members from speaking. It is just setting a policy to what should be followed, needs to be followed as far as signing up. But as time permits, just like we always do, we're still going to ask if there are any of you who would like to speak. If we have the time and we're there, yes, a member can.
I'd always try to ask at the end of the list, I ask, is there anybody else who would like to speak? We're not trying to keep members out, Jerry. It hasn't been a problem that I've observed. We're just asking people to sign up so that we can have contact information.
Again, my whole point out of all of this is, is trying to eliminate confrontations later on and different interpretations. If next year you're not chairman, someone else is chair, they may not follow the same thing. Okay, if we have it clear within the policy, then it's going to be followed the same way all the way through. That's my point out of doing that.
Point taken.
Should that word shall just be should? Should sign up for open forum?
I like the word shall. I like people to sign up. I would encourage people to sign up.
I'm not opposed to them signing up, I'm just saying you use the word shall, that's more definitive, as if you're not going to allow someone to speak if they haven't signed up.
Do they want to be anonymous? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just agreeing with what Jerry said. Sometimes when you come to a board meeting, someone else is speaking, maybe you don't agree with what that speaker said, so then you decide you would like to speak too.
And those people have always been allowed to speak.
I'm just saying the word shall, shall is almost saying you have to.
Tia?
Is there?
Tia?
I'm here.
Oh, I thought it was.
Thought you had something to say.
No, that was, that was me. I've seen the effort of a board now for two and a half years, and in two and a half years, I've never seen a situation where a member got up to respond to what another member had just said. I don't see that as an issue. And I certainly don't see the fact that we say shall as opposed to should, because we want them to sign up. We want them to identify themselves. If they want to be anonymous, then we not, we don't need to hear what they have to say, frankly. If, like if an email, or an email can't come in anonymously, if a letter came in somehow anonymously, either, you know, making points or asking questions, as a board member, I would feel no responsibility to answer that.
Okay, I've expressed my objections to it. I want to move on. Number V2 says 24 hours in advance. You know, I think that's a little bit restrictive. I realize what the problem it comes into when it goes to one person to try and get this all ready along with everything else. It's just, and it all goes to the corporate secretary. The way it is currently written, it says the corporate secretary will read whatever comments are agreed upon to be read. Okay, the last session, Mary Sinkus read them. Okay, which is it? Is it going to be the corporate secretary? Is it going to be the chair, the vice chair? Who is it going to be? Needs to be spelled out.
It is spelled out. It says corporate secretary.
Okay. Then why did you allow Mary to read them the last time?
Because.
Because the policy wasn't written. Yes, I understand that.
Any more discussion on 1.07? Okay, the next one. As we stated earlier, 1.03 has some changes, removing guidelines and community involvement from it. The next item on the agenda, the second reading of Policy 1.03.2. First reading took place in April. It was involved, it was the first reading when we had a number of second readings, and it just got forgotten. So we will do the second reading next week, and that policy will be posted to the website as the policy, excuse me, as the policy in effect. The next item, as Jerry brought up about the wording of guidelines and policies and such, Doug and Tammy have worked very hard on putting together the first reading of policies, and you see them all listed. The word guideline would be removed from each of the above policies. That is the only change to the policies.
I have a comment.
Sure.
Okay, under 9.03, volunteerism, item two, need to also remove community involvement. As we'll do it at the same time, unless you want to go through this process of first, second, first.
Did you say 9.03, Jerry? Did you say 9.03? Is that the one you were referring to?
Yes, 9.03, volunteerism, section two.
Okay.
Jerry, are you on item 11 or item 12 on the agenda?
It's on page 50.
Well, I'm under the one that says Policies 1.03.6, and ends with 9.03.
That's item 12. I think at this time we're talking about 11, the Policies 1.08 and others, where we remove only the word guidelines.
I apologize, sir.
No, okay.
One more.
Is there, okay, so that one, that's fairly self-explanatory, just get that word guideline out of there. The next one, Jerry, item 12, the first reading of Policies 1.03.6, 7.4, 8.15, 8.16, 9.01, 9.03. The word guideline has been removed and replaced with rules, objectives, or procedures. Jerry, you had another, you had another concern on 9.03?
It's on page 50 of your board packet.
Yeah, if there's no objection from the board, I'll just remove community involvement from 9.03. Is everyone okay with that change?
Good catch.
Good catch, Jerry.
Part of my comments came about because there's a little discrepancy between the different The current one that we're on, I do not see 9.03 listed. Is that correct? And that, I was told.
Yeah, on page 41, you'll see the memo, and it lists 9.03 on there. It says, talks about guidelines and switching it. And then if you follow through from page 41 and then go to page 50, you'll see that it is shown. On the following page, on page 51, it starts with all the other ones with those changes, removing the word guideline.
I just think the confusion arises because 11 and 12 on the agenda are kind of flip-flopped with the material in the rest of the packet. So that's where, that's where some of the confusion is arising. So if we could fix that for the board meeting, I think that would be good.
103 is addressed in nine, roman numeral nine.
Okay, at any rate, wherever it's supposed to go in here, under volunteerism, Policy 9.03, the corrections, the changes that are being produced are in the purpose, the purpose of the policy, there's set the procedure, remove guideline. Number one, general, remove guideline. The one that is not included in that is under section two, opportunities for volunteer service, and item two, joint advisory committees. It says community involvement committee, it should be removed.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, the.
On page 75 of your board packet, you will see the memo regarding pickleball courts, the proposal to add four additional pickleball courts at a cost of $61,000. At the suggestion of Director Bidwell, we looked at the possibility of splitting the cost between 2020 and 2021. So the creation of, the construction of the base of the court, we're proposing in 2020 at a cost of $34,000, with the remainder of the work being completed in '21 at a cost of $27,000, for a total of $61,000. Was also requested that we do a forecast, and I failed at the beginning of this meeting to introduce Stacy. I don't know if everybody has met Stacy, our controller. She's the one that spent the time putting together the forecast. At this time, as of month end July, the POA without water is better than budget by $733,000. We're anticipating that this is going to soften a little bit before the end of the year, but we're anticipating by the end of the year, we will remain better than budget to the tune of $517,000. If this is accepting, acceptable to the board, we would move this forward for a vote at the next meeting.
I have a question on the better than budget. Does that include the repairs that are going to happen on Scottsdale?
Yes, it does. We factored in, at the last GM meeting, we talked about how early in the year, because of COVID, we cut back on a lot of our expenses. And now that it appears that we're having a good year, and we want to make sure that we spend some of those expenses, so we don't get negatively impacted down the road, that's why, that's the main reason why we're going to go from 730 down to 517, is because we're actually going to be spending those funds. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
I am all for more pickleball courts. I play three times a week, and I have to go to a neighboring city to play because we don't have enough courts, and they're, some of the courts we have are in poor repair. My concern, however, is whether that money should be spent on new courts, or whether the money should be spent to do maintenance work on courts that we have. I went over again and looked at the courts at Branchwood, and I brought some pictures that I took, and I'll pass this around, of cracks in the courts. And I know I'm a little more concerned, because I work in insurance, and safety is my business. But my question is, do we build something new, or do we spend money on maintenance? You know, this $60,000 or whatever it's going to end up being could be saved until next year. I know Joan mentioned that we need $150,000 to fix the courts at Branchwood. Should this $60,000 be used for new courts, or should it be kept? And we'll get another $90,000 next year so that we can fix Branchwood's courts?
If I remember what Joan was saying about the Branchwood tennis courts, is that her feeling is they should be removed, that they're not fixable, that money spent to fix them is not a good use of money, because they're going to continue to crack. And when we redid two courts at the tennis complex, they were taken up and completely redone in a different manner, that the concrete was put down entirely differently. And I think her point was that it's putting good money after bad to keep fixing the Branchwood tennis courts.
That's why she said it would, yeah, that's why she said it would take $150,000 to replace these.
Yeah, just to replace.
So I'm just saying, you know, I hate to be the killjoy here, but you know, if my roof is leaking, I put a new roof on my house as opposed to buying a new fishing boat.
So?
So I'm just saying, we are, do we want to just leave these courts in poor repair?
I believe Joan is planning to remove them.
That was part of.
In next year, she plans to rip them out.
And that's already been budgeted for?
No, the budget is, we talked about the budget timeline.
Oh, for the twenty twenty-one budget, you mean?
Her intent is to remove them because they're that bad. And, you know, the question will then become, what do you do with that space? And remember, we talked about pickleball. Do you put it here, there, and everywhere, or do you try to keep it together? Because people like to associate and socialize during their activity.
But before we build an additional four courts, shouldn't we figure out where that place is? I, I think we underestimate how many people on the west side in the central section play pickleball. We have sixteen people on my street alone and I'm far west.
To tackle onto that, that's a good point. And Sam, I think you're being a killjoy all to ask some good questions about what we should be thinking about. But I do want to remind you what Joan said in our meeting was, it was the members who asked her not to tear out Branchwood first so that they could still have courts to use and to build the four additional so that that would be completed and they could use it. And then next year, focus on removing Branchwood. It was a member's suggestion, please don't take them out right now. It kind of got to this thinking of getting the four moved done first.
All I'm saying is there's only so much money to go around and are we being good stewards if we build something new when we're not? You know, even if this sixty thousand is used to tear out Branchwood, is that a smarter thing to do? I'm just asking. I, and then I had someone tell me just the other day that court seven and eight at Reardon need work.
Correct.
That, that she actually tripped there, so.
That's the hundred and fifty thousand dollar question about replacing those courts the way the other two were a couple of years ago. And pickleball is gaining, as you say, very much in popularity. Tennis does not seem to have that growth, so. But there are tennis people need to have the number of courts that are at Kingswood in order to have their events. And they cannot have tennis sanctioned events, I hope I'm saying this right, on courts that have pickleball lines on them. So tennis and pickleball people apparently don't work together very well.
Well, the only issue I'm raising is, do we spend this money since we only have so much money? Do we spend the money on fixing what we have or do we build new? And we should be looking towards the future. And I think a decision should be made where we would want to put, I'd like to see a huge pickleball complex somewhere here. I'd like to see indoor and outdoor pickleball courts, because I agree, it's, like Joan said, it's increased six hundred percent over the last few years.
And there's the money problem again.
Well, hey Sammy, if, if we want to see something like that, just over the past weekend, I was over at Osage Park by Lake Bentonville on one oh two and I Street. They've got a nice new eight pack of pickleball courts. And I think that that park over there, which I've been trying to get people to take a field trip to go see, could be something that like Burksdale could turn into, at least an element of that. So I think we've got cards in our deck to position and ask from like the Trail Blazers or Burksdale to leverage them into building pickleball courts. And I mean, I think that there's more than we know that's available here. It's just putting together all of our little elements that, that are, make up our, our deck of cards here. So I think it's great that we are, we're looking at places to refurbish and to build new stuff. I definitely encourage people, let's go look at some of the examples here originally from the same people who are pitching us to your, our, our... I, I just can't see why.
Okay. Jan had an appointment, she had to leave. My feeling is that we go ahead and put in the pickleball courts, which we've removed for those people for a long time. It's not a long-term commitment to that site. But it, it's an improvement for them and it's something that they've been told would happen for a long time.
David, how, how many pickleball courts are over in Metfield?
Three or four? Three.
Three.
And these are specifically pickleball courts? They're not tennis courts with lines drawn on them?
Tennis courts are gone.
So we're talking about building four more courts. Why not put two courts at Metfield and two courts at Branchwood?
It's not cost-effective.
Yeah, we, we have the site at Metfield. What Joan referenced at the GM meeting is, similar to the Branchwood courts, we used to have tennis courts at Metfield that were beyond repair. You just, you, you, the, the photos that you shared are, are spot-on. You, you can't, those are beyond repair, those courts. And so several years ago, we removed the courts from Metfield, but we still have the location, the base, and so forth. And so what our plan would be, would be to install the courts at Metfield on that area, because we have sufficient amount of land. And that would then give us seven courts in that area. And, and when we met with the pickleball contingent, they did a very informal vote and they, they felt that having them all in one location was preferred. And then, we would then remove the courts at Branchwood for the safety purposes that you're talking about specifically. Now, down the road, is there something, is it possible that we could add additional pickleball courts at that location? Because we would then have that large, flat area. That's absolutely possible. But that's not what we're asking for at this time.
Last question. Is there nothing that can be done to fill these cracks in temporarily without spending thousands of dollars?
We've tried, but when, you know, concrete wants to move. And when it's small, narrow cracks, you can fix them, but when they get as large as the photos that you're showing, you can't, you can't fix that.
Okay. So we will vote on that next Thursday. The, brings us to the walk-in memos. Which one do you want to do first, Tom?
I'll do the first one. So on this walk-in memo, we have a, a new construction at the fifty-four McGrath Circle. They are building a new home. And I'm gonna ask you to flip two pages and you'll see the map that we provided. For the board members at home, Tammy sent this information over to you. You can pull it up on your email. So you'll see on this satellite photo, the, the new home under construction. And then, which I outlined in black. And then also, you can see their unimproved lot, which is right across from the house. There's about a, I don't know, ten, fifteen-foot common property strip. What they're asking is that we run, allow them to run their lines across, run the piping across. The leach field would be on the unimproved property. Just the lines to get to the leach field would run through common property. Now, in most cases, in the vast majority of cases, policy eight point zero three is used when a leach field has failed on an existing home. So this is a little bit of a different situation where they originally thought the homeowner or the home constructor, the homeowner that is building a home, thought they could have a leach field in the corner. But as it turned out, it was, it did not work out. And so they're asking for this. We've checked with Doug, our general counsel, and he feels that policy eight point zero three can be used for this purpose, to allow them to use the common property for this. And then the, the homeowner is a little anxious and they're trying to make sure that there's no delay in construction of their home. And so they've requested if the board could take a vote today. The board can take votes at work sessions. Normally, they don't. We, we take all the votes at the regular meeting. But trying to be helpful to the home, the new homeowner, we request that the board consider taking a vote today. And then I also provide you with a copy of policy eight point zero three.
I have two questions. First one is kind of predicated upon that my understanding is that CCI has a right-of-way easement around all boundaries.
Around the boundary of all of the POA, but not every single individual boundary inside of the POA?
Okay, on my lot, I was told, and it shows on my plan, that there is a right-of-way for a utility right-of-way on all sides of my property.
Yeah, utility easement.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I, I apologize.
So the question out of that is, do they have approval from CCI to go through that right-of-way?
They do not yet, but they would have to, you're right, they would have to seek that permission.
It's hard to tell from this map, because some of the blue line is washed out pretty much. But it apparently, that they have already gone over the black line on their clearing of the lot. So whose property is that? But it appears almost that their property line goes back quite a bit further, which if you look at it from this viewpoint, be to the north.
If you see that, that other house on the very top of the page, that's their neighbor and that neighbor owns the lot in between. And so they've, my understanding is they've had permission to go onto that lot temporarily while they're building their house. But they, they actually asked to buy that lot and the neighbor said, no, we want to keep it. So the people building their house did, are in communication with that, that other neighbor to the north on this page.
The house under construction, Jerry, does sit on two lots. Right through the middle of the house, you can see that there's a, a dashed line, so this property would, there would be three properties right there.
So there are three lots here?
Yes, the house covers two of them. And then the common property is between the odd-shaped one is the property that they wish to put the septic system on. That pretty much makes sure nobody builds on it.
What's that, Tia?
Tell me, wondering why we wouldn't do it? What's there, is that risk here? I'm not seeing a downside.
I don't see a downside. You know, these people are, are building a, a quite a nice home. They've done everything that they should, contacting us and, and working with the people, tried to get the one beside them. They have the lot behind them. To run a four-inch line through the common property to get to the drain field is not a big deal in my estimation. I, I be nice to them and let them do it. I don't know what the alternative is for them.
Well, I, I don't know their particular situation, but I know because we're in the process of building an additional home and there is a particular septic system. It costs about twenty-five thousand dollars. But there is a particular septic system you can buy when a lot doesn't perk. Or in this case, where they don't have enough room for their septic field. But since they own that other property and we're just talking about a small pipe going across there, I mean, I doubt that we're gonna put a bike trail in between there. And the risk would be if the pipe would leach and we'd end up with, you know, sanitary problems in that area. But I, it's not wide enough to really do anything with that common property. And the only other thing that we open ourselves up to is other people requesting something like this, you know?
We get requests probably once or twice a year, typically when a septic system has failed. And maybe the home is adjacent to common property. They no longer have space on their home, on their lot, and they need to build a second, a new field. And then they'll come to us and then the board will vote. Typically, I, I am not aware of the board ever turning anybody down. And they actually have the entire leach field on common property. In this case, the leach field will not be on common property, just the pipe to get to the leach field would be on common property. So in, in a way, this is less intrusive on common property than in normal situ, normal requests.
Just a little different than requests we've had in the past, so.
Yeah, I don't understand it. It really is not a big deal to go across with a short distance that way with an underground pipe. The part of it that disturbs me is though that we get pushed into this corner when technically they should not have had a building permit to even get started without having the septic approval ahead of time, so.
I think that would be an issue to take up with the ACC.
The septic would not work when they started building.
Hey, Jerry brings up a good point there, and I know it's not easy for us to ever think about talking to ACC as a giant elephant in the room. But if we're doing projections for the city and we're owning the water department, and the ACC has such a critical role in playing for approval of percolating lots for building permits and their rules around what type of septic systems are allowed. It's now twenty twenty. I don't think we can hide from having to try to amend and work with the ACC to get more future septic options available for homeowners. And another thing, that's a major caveat of the amount of what is considered proper flow rate for a percolating lot has to deal with the home size and what is being classified as a bedroom and how many bathrooms. So it's done on square footage and it's done by the amount of rooms and what those rooms are categorized for. So people can fudge them one way or the other and dramatically change the amount of required flow for the percolating lot, all of which sounds like, probably like gobbledygook to most people. And it's intended to be that way, but that's the real deal. And figuring out how we can have three hundred new home permits a year, whatever we're gonna average, and not tackling this in the new decade at the start of, I mean, we've got to get ahead of this. So these little examples are great precedents in making the conversation happen. Because this is not talking about somebody's fence line or what color their house is. This is talking about where their waste goes, poisonous materials. And it's a hard topic and it's one that apparently no one has wanted to talk about. So we should talk about it. But yeah, let them run the four-inch pipe, whatever, but we need to get, we need to get straight with ACC or the set of things. We own the water department.
And we have no control over the ACC. We can talk to them. And you know, we're the ones being approached with a possible solution to this. We did not create it. We didn't have anything to say about the home being constructed. But today, we're faced with the choice. Are we going? faced with the choice, are we going to allow these homeowners to use that lot? I think we probably are. All the other questions are something for on down the road. Today, we need to let these homeowners use their property, connect through common property so that they can finish their home. That being said, is everybody comfortable with taking a vote during a work session on this? I know we normally don't do it, but apparently there is a time constraint. I know these things take forever to work through the system before they end up on our desk. So do we have a suggested motion? We have a suggested motion. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I make a motion authorizing the owners to perform McGrath Circle to use common property for their septic system, with the understanding that the septic field would be located on their unimproved lot, and that the septic field would be of sufficient size for their...
And a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Jerry Barron seconds. Okay, well, I think we've already discussed it.
I'd ask the question anyways.
I'll ask a question. Is there any more discussion? I know we have some concerns, but today, this is the question. All those in favor of...
Just question.
Yes, Jerry.
Is this the final vote, or are we just voting to move it to...
No. This is the vote to allow them to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing this to happen, the motion as proposed? Say aye, raise your hands.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. I'm sure the homeowners will be happy. The next item is a capital request. It will not happen. The capital will not be expended until the end of the year. Keith Eames has a couple of mowers that are a different brand than we are currently leasing. My understanding is that these mowers are used regularly, but not every day, and they have a special purpose on a specific golf course. He has an opportunity to purchase them coming off of lease, rather than lease two new machines from a different brand. They have attachments on them, specialized attachments, that would also have to be purchased. Keith figures that, he feels that the purchase of these is the way to go. They would last 10 years or more for roughly $25,000. And it seems to be a pretty good purchase for $2,500, he gets two machines. He knows them, they're in good shape. Yes?
David, what's our monthly lease rate on these two?
I don't have that in front of me. I can get that.
I'd like to have that number before I make the decision on buying them versus...
Understood.
...ending with a lease.
Yes. The reason that we're considering this today instead of at the end of the year is because the lead time on ordering new equipment is considerable. He would have to try to get the new machines of a different brand on order now, and hopefully they would be ready at the beginning of the new year. But apparently, equipment is...
I'm confused, David. I read the memo, and maybe I read it too fast, but what I read it as saying is that these two machines are coming off lease at the end of the year.
Correct.
And the proposal is to purchase them rather than signing a new lease with whoever we lease them from for new equipment, but it would be another lease.
It's a different brand. We're changing...
Does it matter?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Because the attachments that go on to these machines to perform their specialized tasks are different. The attachments don't switch.
You're saying that we have purchased attachments to machines that we lease?
No. We probably lease the attachments also, but we buy the machines, including the attachments that go on them.
No.
No, the attachments, the specialized attachments are leased, and they're purchased at the same time that you purchased the mower.
So those would be included in the 25K?
Correct.
That is correct. So what we would, yeah, what we would do, what I'll do is, I will get the current lease rate and what the lease rate would be on a new piece of equipment if we were to go that way. And I will have that for next week. To be clear, we're not asking the board to vote on this today. So we can get this information, amend this memo, so to provide the board with additional information. And as David said, the funds would not be expended until December, but for planning purposes, we need to know now, because the lead time, if we have to purchase new equipment, the lead time is fairly large. So that's why...
You keep saying, "Purchase new equipment."
Lease new, sorry. Lease, yes. Lease new equipment. You're correct. I stated that incorrectly.
Gee.
So this is just, you know, this is FYI. This is coming up. Tom will get information for us to help us make the decision. I don't think Keith would bring this to us if he didn't think it was a more cost-effective way to go. The fact that he feels he can get 10 more years out of these machines is significant to me, that he likes these machines enough that he's willing to have them for 10 more years. So apparently, he thinks they're doing the job.
I think what's important to comment is, well, first of all, I'm going to request that, I'm going to see if I can get Keith to be here for next week. But second of all, this is, you know, this is a really good way of saving money. We've leased the equipment. We maintain the equipment. We know the history of this equipment. We know it's in good working order, because we've been the ones maintaining it. And so we know that this is a good buy. And by buying it out and having a long life of approximately 10 years, it's a good purchase as opposed to going to a brand-new piece of equipment and leasing a new piece of equipment that may end up costing us more to maintain. Who knows? We have a track record with it. So, and we definitely don't want... Yes?
I'm not doubting any of those facts. I would just like one more fact to be presented to us.
You got it.
And that is, what's the cost of monthly lease?
We will get that information for you. I just wanted to explain about how this is really a cost-effective way of managing our equipment fleet.
I agree with that totally.
Okay, I have two questions. One, I don't like assuming anything. We're not going to borrow from a water company to pay for these, right? Is that correct?
No, no. I mean, I didn't think it was necessary to restate that we're doing very well compared to budget.
Okay. I accept that very easily. The other question is, I haven't been out on the golf courses as much this year as I was last year. Last year, we had a problem with one mower, that it left ridges and uneven cutting. One of these machines is not that machine. Is that correct?
No, it's not the same machine. And there are times that we have problems with our mowers, you know, where the, I'm going to guess, Keith would be a better one to answer, but it sounds like the reels on that mower need to be worked on. We've had mowers where that brake have hydraulic line brakes. This is common. But in this case, we have a very good maintenance, equipment maintenance team. They do a really good job of maintaining our equipment and getting a long life out of our equipment. And so we know this stuff. We wouldn't, there's no way that Keith would come to us and request to purchase a used piece of equipment. We used it, unless it was something that, it was a good decision.
Okay. I'm very familiar with the whole concept of doing this, and have a lot of experience with equipment. It's just, I've gotten to the point where I have to have things verified, and that's all I'm doing, is verifying.
No problem at all. And I'll see if Keith can be here, and that way, if any additional questions come up next week, can feel free to shoot them in. I can't guarantee, I haven't spoken with him about his schedule, so I can't guarantee he'll be here, but I'll give it a try.
That completes our list of items. The regular monthly board meeting is next Thursday, August 27th, right here in the boardroom at 6:00 PM. The R and R, next meeting for R and R is September 1st at 4:00 PM in the boardroom. The Board of Directors' General Managers' Meeting is Thursday, September 10th, 4:30 PM in the boardroom. Next work session, Thursday, September 17th at 9:00 AM in the boardroom. The September regular board, or regular meeting is Thursday, September 24th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you.